I would expect it would either be Tam Ward who was on last time or Jane Stetson. If anybody's gonna show up, and I don't know that they will, they were aware of the date, you know, as of the last meeting, they knew that it was today when I sent the link this afternoon.
All right, we got a couple people in the waiting room, I'll let them in.
Chris, are you all fired up for motions?
Oh yeah, I've been rehearsing.
That's good. We've got a lot in this one.
If you, I have a dual screen setup here, you can see I've got my monitor over there, I've got the language ready.
Love it.
Doing stretches.
Ethan, you committed easy form by phrasing the motions, that was pretty nice.
All right, Ethan, we're up and ready, we're after five and we're on live on YouTube.
Okay. Good evening, this is the Camden Planning Board Meeting, October 7, 2021. The meeting is held by teleconference through Zoom, it's also streamed on YouTube. I'm going to first turn it over to Jeremy to talk about the Zoom meeting policy, the Zoom meeting itself and how comments and things can be submitted.
All right, yeah, so just since COVID, we've been operating remotely. I think it's been working pretty successfully, I think there's been, I think it's been good, but, so we're taking comments via email and providing the opportunity for people to participate in these meetings. And we're even enabling people during the comment period to even text me if they want to, and we'll include those. So we're doing that, we've been moving along. Still a little over sixty days ago, I think it was August 5th, we approved a remote meeting policy that would be effective for sixty days or until rescinded by the planning board. And that sixty days happened two days ago. This meeting tonight is a continuation of the meetings that we've had already. So moving forward, it would be my recommendation, I've chatted with Ethan about it a little bit, to continue these meetings as COVID continues to be an issue throughout the state. And I think these meetings are being successfully, we're handling them pretty well, and I think there's good comment that we do receive, we're providing plenty of opportunity. So my suggestion, I guess on this first piece would be to look at extending this public remote meeting policy for another sixty days. And that's where we are. I will say I've got nothing in the works as far as site plans or hearings that are in the works, so anything that we do discuss in coming weeks will be likely ordinance amendments, and we'll start with workups and those kinds of things, so.
Yeah, and thanks Jeremy, that takes us into the first item on our agenda. And that is whether we do want to renew the remote meeting policy for another sixty days. Is there any discussion among the board on that? Go ahead Anita. I think you're muted.
She's just giving you a thumbs up.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, go ahead Mark.
You can chime in. You know, these Zoom meetings are certainly very convenient, but I think we're missing an aspect to the meeting and the information by live meetings. And I think eventually that's important, but you know, I'm okay for another sixty days.
Yeah, and I agree, I think, you know, just chiming in with my own two cents. I feel like we've been pretty, we've actually had pretty good participation on these meetings from the public. And, you know, I don't recall having, you know, many more people showing up live, but I do agree there's something to being in a room together. But my position is that, given the issues with COVID still and the Delta variant and everything else we're dealing with, if the Zoom meetings are appropriate, anybody else on the board have any comments? Go ahead Andy. You're muted.
Yeah, I think there's pros and cons to both, you know, live and remote. Myself, I'm a remote employee, so I show up at my desk every day and Zoom all day, you know, and have very effective meetings, so, you know, I don't see it as an issue. I think it's actually more efficient in some cases in, you know, having access to materials, you know, having a double screen to work on. So, you know, other than, you know, being in the room and, you know, having that personal kind of interaction that Mark talks about, I think, you know, Zooms are fine, and I don't personally see a reason why we shouldn't continue even after COVID is over as an option, but that's just my opinion.
Okay Pat, go ahead, thanks Andy.
So the as of date Jeremy, you said was two days ago, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so.
This is a continuation, so this meeting still falls under that policy.
But we're thinking of continuing it for another sixty days.
Correct.
Okay, and when it comes up for review again, is it going to be weighted more based upon COVID or like Andy was commenting about some of the other benefits of it?
Yeah, I think that's up to the board to decide, you know, there are benefits, I think, to the remote meetings. I also work from home and am comfortable with it, but at the same time, you know, the one thing that I think that we have to pay key to is the idea of being accessible to the public, and I get that the meetings do have access through comments on YouTube and Zoom questions and emailing and even texting Jeremy, which is above and beyond really. But there is some aspect to sort of open government that includes being in a room together, and I'm not perfectly set on giving that up, but I think that until we have COVID wrapped, you know, and I think we could be in that for some time. As we've seen, it doesn't just go away. But until that's a non-issue, I think it's probably likely that we will continue to extend. I am definitely open to hearing comment and the perspective of fellow members, whether we want to continue after that. I'm not sure we even can. I think that's the thing that Jeremy's probably raising his hand on, but like, you know, we're generally required to have open public meetings, you know, and I think be accessible. And you could make this argument, but basically we're relying on the COVID problem right now as our main reasoning, and, you know, again, Pat, yours and Andy's being away or Anita being away for a while, that certainly doesn't, that can also figure into a need for a remote meeting. But on the balance, the whole long term, I don't think you're, I don't think we're in a position where we can just say, okay, we're gonna go remote all the time. And Jeremy, I see you nodding, but you can chime in if you want.
No, that's very true, I mean, and at some point we're gonna have to end up probably having some person, if we do extend this, state statute regulates this, so we just can't decide on our own. Right now, we're working within the statute that allows it. At some point, we're going to have to get to that place where at least one member or meeting place is, can be attended by the public. Maybe one member and myself, I don't know, but we'll continue, I mean, I think that makes sense and we'll certainly provide guidance moving forward, but for the next sixty days, at least COVID, we've got that.
I think I see Mark's hand up, he wants to be that one member with you in the room Jeremy. Okay Anita.
Sitting on both of my hands, that's not possible.
Two questions, one is, has Jeremy or Ethan or Jeannie or anyone else received any comments from the public regarding the Zoom and the effect of Zoom meetings for them, positive or negative?
Not one, not one comment about it at all.
Yeah, I've received nothing.
I think people probably know the Select Board's been meeting in person, you know, generally everyone is masked. Now, they have created a remote meeting process now, so in there will be an ability to have a meeting in the meeting, in the French conference room while having people attend remotely, and that could be members and Select Board members and the public.
Second question or issue is that I wonder if Jeremy would like to explain the OWL method of conducting a hybrid meeting. We used that successfully for a Pathways Committee meeting, if you wanted to explain.
Yeah, Anita, can I just stop this here? Can I just stop this here for a second? I appreciate that, and that will go into a discussion for future meetings. I'm wanting to go to a vote on this and move along so we can get Jim home in time for dinner. If we go ahead and have a meeting, the next time we want to renew this policy, if we want to talk about a hybrid or something like that, I am definitely willing to consider and entertain all those things, but at this point right now, we've already spent more time on this than I really wanted to. We've got a lot to go through for this application itself, so I'm gonna go ahead and make this motion that I moved that the board renewed the remote meeting policy for another sixty days due to issues with the Delta variant. And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, and I'll go around and take a roll call vote, so Pat?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Yes. Chris O?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
And it's an aye from me, and I realize now that we've probably got two sitting alternates who may not be voting members tonight, is that correct? Jeannie? We don't, we've got basically the full board.
Only one.
Okay, who's our alternate?
Pat.
I am.
Pat, okay, so Andy's sitting, all right, Andy, so you're now an official member, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, great, all right, we won't forget that. All right, so we're all set to go then, Pat, again, as you know, we definitely welcome your input and everything else on this, but you will not be voting on the actual motion. That allows us to move on then to the next step, next item on the agenda, which would be public comments on non-agenda items. Jeremy, have you got anything in your queue?
Nope.
Anything for the board members on this? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna move on. Up now is a application for a minor subdivision based on the final plan. We're gonna have Jim Dorsky who's here introduce the subdivision, and then we will move to subdivision final plan review. We did do a site walk on Monday, the date escapes me, is that the fourth? The fourth? And present at the site walk were Pat and Andy, Chris O, Anita and Mark and myself, and Jeannie was there for zoning office, and of course Jim Dorsky was there to walk us around. So we did do that site visit, and that is in the record. And I will now go ahead and turn over the meeting to Jim, and Jim, go ahead and present your proposal.
Thanks Ethan, so I'm Jim Dorsky, representing Matchbox 108 LLC in their application to divide their property into two lots. I'll just give a little background again, like I did at the pre-app meeting, and explain why the creation of two lots is a subdivision. So the land that they're proposing to subdivide was part of a larger piece of land and up until 2020, when that land was divided into two lots. And so the current owner of 108 Davy Street, which was Matchbox 108 LLC, they wanted to put a second dwelling on their property, but they didn't have enough shore frontage. For every dwelling on a lot, you have to have the minimum frontage requirement, which is 150 feet, so to have a second dwelling, they would have needed 300 feet of shore frontage, and they didn't have it. So it is allowed in the ordinance to have a totally separate lot in this area, even though it's mostly in the shoreline zone, because it's entirely outside the 75 foot setback, it only needs 10,000 square feet of lot size. So we were able to create a separate lot for that second dwelling, and in that way, you know, create two lots that would then meet all the zoning requirements. They don't plan, you know, they don't have any plans right now to sell either of the properties. This was just a way to reconfigure the property in such a way that it met all the zoning requirements and allowed them to have two dwellings. And because this division is the second division within five years of what was all contiguous land earlier last year, that second division triggers subdivision review, and that's why we're here before you.
Jim, can you share the screen, or want me to share the screen? Ethan, do you think we need to share the screen for the board?
I mean, I think it's important, I think it's relevant to getting it up, I do want to just add, just, I want to break in here just real quick, because I think we've moved past one thing, and I see some people on the phone or on the meeting, and I'm just gonna call them out individually and ask them to introduce themselves and tell me who they are and what their interest is. So I'm gonna go around, I see a Caitlin Thompson.
She, I will say Caitlin works in our office, she's one of the assessors, she does the meeting.
Gotcha, okay, and Tam Ward?
Hi there, I am the manager of Matchbox 108 LLC.
Great Tam, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
And there's the 802 number.
Hi, this is Jane Stetson, I am the purchaser of Matchbox 108 LLC. I guess, I guess I'm sort of an owner.
Gotcha.
I was an owner, but it now belongs to LLC.
Gotcha, thank you and welcome. All right, yeah, so we'll go back to Jim then, Jim, go ahead and if you want to just run through the actual ins and outs of the subdivision itself, and if you'd like to share your screen, I think that's appropriate at this time.
Okay, can you see that now?
I am not.
Not seeing anything.
No?
But Jeremy can do it if you're having an issue.
There it is.
See it now?
Yep.
Okay. So again, this, you know, this property, I'm running my cursor around, that's the land that's owned by Matchbox 108 LLC. There's an existing home here, there's work being done on it at this time, and there's an existing garage that's planned to be removed up here near the street on this smaller lot number two. This land over here, 96 Davy LLC, that's the land, you know, the other land that was all contiguous with this in 2020 and that was divided off. So again, this is, these are the two lots being proposed. They both meet minimum frontage, lot size requirements. Subdivisions within the shoreline zone that have frontage on a water body are required to have a right of way. Basically, the intent is to provide access to the water for lots that don't have frontage on the water, so that's why we've created a right of way over here, it's just a requirement in the ordinance. That's pretty much it, I mean, there's no infrastructure proposed in this subdivision, you know, the lots, we didn't need to create a road to create frontage, they both have frontage on the town road. So there's no development proposed, it's really just about these two lots and making sure they meet all the zoning requirements.
Yep, thank you Jim, and I just want to say, I did mention before that we had a site walk. And one of the things that came up in the site walk were the utility, the utility structures that were existing on the new lot, can you just run through that for the board real quickly to describe what you said at the site?
Yeah, so the existing building that's going to remain, it gets its, like, you can see the water line running from a water shut-off valve here. It crosses lot two onto lot one. The power comes overhead from a pole on the opposite side of Davy Street to a pole here. Then it'll run through a generator into the building, and the sewer line runs out here. So the power and other overhead utilities coming in here and running to the building and the water line will both require easements over lot two for the benefit of lot one. So the way that'll work is, the intent, I believe, is for Matchbox 108 LLC to continue to own lot one. It'll convey lot two, and Jane can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the idea was that lot two would be conveyed to Jane and her husband Bill personally. And when, in that deed, and I'm guessing, I'll probably write the deed description for that deed, and what I would say is, you know, lot two, I have a meets and balances description for lot two. It would then say, together with a 25-foot wide right of way as shown on the plan by Gartley and Dorsky, you know, recorded in the Registry of Deeds in such and such a cabinet sheet and all that, and it will say, then it would say, subject to easements for existing utilities crossing the southerly portion of the above described lot as shown on said plan. So that, and there's a note on the plan, I've got a note in the surveyor's notes down here that says, note number seven, easements to be reserved for existing utilities over lot two for the benefit of lot one. And that's about as simple as it needs to be in the deed to just say that these existing utilities have the right to remain there. And that would provide lot one with the right to keep them there and maintain them and replace them if they needed to.
Okay. Thank you. As we noted in our site walk, I mean, it is fairly straightforward, and at the time of the, right now, obviously, because the lot is just one lot and has not yet been subdivided, obviously the owners can put the utility structures in wherever, wherever they want, and putting an easement on lot two to serve lot one isn't a big issue in my opinion, but I just wanted to cover that real quick. We are now, I guess, looking at whether there's any questions. We've already had a public, well, we had a pre-application review, and we decided at that time that we would not have any, not have a hold of a separate public hearing because there was, it was attended by the public. So we sort of rolled those into one, but we should probably and will now allow members to ask questions, but first, before we do that, I've got a few things I've got to run through. One thing is that as a board, we need to determine that the, that the application is complete, and I'm wondering if anybody has, if Chris O's got his motion all queued up on that.
I make a motion that the application is complete.
Based on, that's what Jeannie's gonna say.
I'm looking for my notes on that part, but.
Before we go there, could I interject something?
Sure.
At the last meeting, I brought up a concern about the original lot. And my concern was that I thought that should have been part of the subdivision review. It's been clarified, and the town attorney has clarified that, you know, in a letter. And I kind of hope to add that to the, to the documentation. And basically, what it says is that, that the initial lot is, although it should be considered as part of this subdivision, it's not, it doesn't fall under the subdivision. All it does is it creates the, the number in the division, and it's not part of this subdivision.
Yeah, that's correct, the way, the way I read the law and the way that the town attorney has branded it and the way that Jim described it, and indeed backed up by Jeremy, is that they can divide off that first lot, it's not a major subdivision. Then you have a trigger if you divide that lot, any of the remaining lots again down the road. I agree that it was made clear that that is the proper way to handle it. Whether that is an issue that we want to look at as far as, you know, if someone thinks that that's an end around, around the subdivision statute, then that's something we can look at, but not in this meeting, because that is not relevant at all to this particular subdivision. If that's something of a concern as far as how the town of Camden handles subdivisions, that is something we are, we can certainly look at, but it is based on state statute. And I'm not sure exactly the ins and outs of all of that. However, for the purposes of this one, I agree with you 100%. This particular application falls under that statute, is triggered by the prior subdivision, but that prior subdivision is not relevant at all to this particular subdivision. Although I think Jeremy mentioned something about considering the overall impact, is that right Jeremy?
Since, I mean, statute, and I included in there, if I have a copy of it right here. It just says, "The municipal reviewing authority, which the planning board shall consider the existence of the previously created lots, or lots in reviewing a proposed subdivision created by subsequent dividing." So it says that you can look at it. That's the reference of the, you know, what triggered, what ends up becoming the third lot, how you get to three. But I think if there were significant wetland issues on that first lot, or if there was drainage issues or stormwater issues, infrastructure stuff, I think the board could, could at least look at that in how they're handling those issues on the new lots that are being created.
Yeah, so Ethan, I didn't, I didn't intend to blow this way out of proportion, right? All I wanted to do was say that I would like to add the town attorney's interpretation to the subdivision plan.
Yeah, no, I certainly didn't mean to indicate that you did. I thought it was absolutely appropriate to bring that up since it was going on behind the scenes anyway, so I agree. Is that a motion to add the letter from the town attorney to the record?
It is.
Okay. And Jim, you can go ahead and stop sharing your screen, I think we're done with the. Is there a second on that motion? Okay, Chris, a second, all right, roll call vote, so Andy?
Aye.
Aye. Anita? Mark?
Aye.
And Chris O?
Aye.
All right, and that's aye from me as well, so that motion carries. And the letter from Bill Kelly, the town attorney, will be added to the record. And we can move on from that. So at this point then, we were, Chris O was working on his language, I'm sure he's had plenty of time now for the, the finding of the, whether the application is complete.
I believe that my wording is that we, I make a motion that relying on our review of the submission packet dated September 22nd, we find the submissions outlined in Appendix B that are relevant to this application have been provided.
Nice. That was beautiful, is there a second?
A second.
All right, we're gonna take another vote, Andy?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Chris O?
Aye.
And it's an aye from me, so that one, so moved. We now have a complete application. And we've seen the presentation from the applicant, so we now need to, I will move to open the meeting to a public hearing. Do I, I don't know, I think I need to do a motion, we'll just open this to a public hearing. So now we're gonna go to Jeremy to see if we have any public comment on his various channels.
None.
None. Any of the people in attendance here on the Zoom meeting care to chime in? All quiet on that front. Okay. I think at this point then, it's appropriate to close the public hearing. We, I did mention, Jeannie asked me to mention this, and I did mention it before, but I'll do it now, noting for the record, at the September 9 meeting, we did approve a motion to forego the public hearing because we heard comments from the public at the public information meeting held that evening. I mentioned that before, just wanted to note that again for the record at this point in time. I just want to make sure, one last time, no members of the public wishing to speak before I close the. before I close the public hearing, there will be no opportunity to join in again after I close this part of the hearing. So hearing none, uh, we're going to close that and move on. We are now in the point of discussion amongst the board. And we could have a general discussion first if that, if anybody has anything they want to say. But then we will be moving through the final plan determination, uh, down the approval criteria of article eight. Um, and so at that point, um, we'll be going through that, but if anybody has anything they wanted to say generally, this would be the time. I don't see anybody chiming in. Okay. Oh, there was one thing that we also need to note for the record is we granted several waivers. If you all have in front of you, uh, appendix B part of the application, the completeness of the application. We granted some, some waivers to appendix B under numeral one. Letter M. And I'm trying to pull that up right now on my documents. Letter M is a performance guarantee. Meeting the requirements for article ten, we granted that. And, uh, numeral four E, which is, uh, stormwater plan because there's no, uh, infrastructure posed. For F, which includes location of proposed utilities, including electrical cable, water and sewer. Again, no infrastructure planned on this particular lot. Anything existing there is for the services of, of lot one. And then finally, four O, which would be the provisions for controlling erosion and sedimentation. Um, again, because this lot is simply drawing an imaginary line and putting a couple pins in the ground, no infrastructure is planned. So I just wanted to put that into the record that those waivers were granted at the pre-application meeting. Are you satisfied, Jeannie?
Yes, thank you very much. Good job.
Okay, thank, uh, thank you. Um, okay, so we're now into the final plan determination. There was nobody who had anything general to speak to. So we're going to go through the criteria of article four, section eight. Is that right? Is it, where am I here?
Article eight.
Article eight, correct, yes. Thank you, Jeannie. I'm going through all my different documents up here.
And for each one of these, you may want to mention when we've, we've got copies of sign offs.
Right. Okay, so there are quite a few of these, um, who, which probably do not apply. And I'm going to, uh, in those situations, um, I think that we're still gonna require a motion that they're not, they're not applicable. So, um, you know, Crisso, get that word all worked out in your tongue twisters and then we'll go from there. Under article eight, uh, section, under article eight approval standards, it does note that every motion must be a positive motion. That means it needs to be in the affirmative. So, um, you, you can see the language there, but it would be satisfied because there is no construction, not that it doesn't necessarily apply. You know, that sort of thing. So we need to actually get that language into each and every motion. So it's not as simple as saying does not apply. Uh, section one pollution. Uh, read it real quick. Just the top part, but the proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. And then there's some criteria listed there. Anita? Was that a hand up? Oh, you're just adjusting your camera. Okay. Uh, is there a motion on?
I make a motion that the proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution.
Second.
Okay, and I would just gently coach that because there's no, no construction or infrastructure in the, in the motions. Um, and I will go around, we have a motion in a second. So, uh, Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Crisso?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. So moved. Uh, number two, sufficient water, section two, sufficient water, the proposed subdivision has sufficient water available to the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. Any discussion? Any motion?
I'll make a motion that the proposed subdivision has sufficient water available because it is accessible to town water directly.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Crisso?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. So moved. So we have public water, we have fire protection. I want to get, we, we kind of did the public water, should have clarified that.
Yeah, I should.
As far as the fire protection. Yep. Uh,
Can I amend my motion?
Yep.
I amend my motion that it has access to public water and per the sign off from uh, Chief Farley, there is sufficient water for fire protection.
Great. And I don't think we're required to, unless anybody has an objection to, to, we take a roll call on that. So I will say so moved. Uh, section three municipal water supply. Uh, the proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on existing water supply if one is to be used.
I make a motion that the proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on the existing water supply.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Crisso?
Hi.
And that's an eye from me. So moved. Section four erosion. Proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable sedimentation or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results. Um, as discussed, there is no construction happening here, um, at this time and any erosion issues would be covered uh, under the future permit.
Right.
Process. Is there any discussion? Just want to make sure on some of these that people get a chance if they want to jump in. And I don't see anybody. Okay, Crisso, go ahead.
So based on the fact that there is, I make a motion that the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable sedimentation uh, or reduction lands capacity to hold water due to the fact that there is no proposed construction at this time.
Have a motion, looking for a second?
Second.
From Seagull Dollar. Okay, uh, Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Bye.
Crisso?
Hi.
So moved. All right, uh, traffic. Section five, traffic, the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway public growth congestion or unsafe conditions. And here there's a reference to a sign up from police chief Randy Gagné, uh, dated ten four twenty-one. Any discussion? Doubt it. Okay, motion?
Make a motion that the proposed subdivision will not impede traffic or congestion based on current existing situation and the sign off of Chief Gagne.
Looking for a second?
Seconded.
Sorry.
All right, uh, again, roll call, Andy?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Anita, go ahead.
It's all right. Um, I'm wondering if the subdivision review form from the road commissioner, Dave, Dave Saint Laurent is, um, also applicable to this particular, uh, question about the existing roads can adequately handle proposed traffic, et cetera. Isn't that, um, also relevant to this question? You, you said, you, you made reference.
Yeah, I see that. Yeah, I see that. Absolutely. I think that's the right, right to include this. It, we include that as well. So Crisso, do you want to amend?
I will amend my motion to in- include the sign off from the road commissioner.
Dave St. Laurent, okay.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, and we'll just make sure we run around. So Andy?
Anita. Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Crisso?
Hi.
And that's an eye from me. So moved, um. Anita, do you have something?
No.
I, I keep hearing Crisso say Anita.
I said, thank you, Anita.
Oh, thank you, Anita. Got you. I was wondering if I was missing a hand up. Um, sewage disposal, section six, the proposed subdivision will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal and will not cause an unreasonable burden on municipal services if they are utilized. Any discussion or emotion?
Uh, I will make a motion that based on the sign off from wastewater superintendent Dave Bolstridge dated ten four twenty-one and the fact that no construction will be occurring at this time, the proposed subdivision will will not, will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal and will not cause an unreasonable burden.
Due to the fact that it's municipal.
He's not in.
Second.
Second, okay.
Oh, I, that may have been my internet, sorry.
It's okay. We have a motion in a second. So Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Crisso?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. Motion carries. Um, let's see here. Next is the municipal, section seven municipal solid waste disposal, the proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden and the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste if municipal services are to be utilized. We have a sign off from the manager of Midco Solid Waste Corporation on this one. I doubt there's any discussion here, uh, given there's no infrastructure. So Crisso, you're up.
A motion that the proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste if municipal services are to be utilized citing the sign off of the manager of Midco Solid Waste Corporation, Mike Martunas.
Was that a second, Mark?
It was, yes.
All right, yep. So we're going to vote on that. Uh, Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Crisso?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. So moved. Section eight, aesthetic, cultural and natural values. The proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife or the municipality itself, rare and implacable natural areas or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline. Is there any discussion on this one? Anita?
I, I just have a question. Two of the letters that came back from town, entities, people, uh, did mention the question of tree removal. I think it was a, well, Rick Steibl, the tree warden said tree removal within the town right of way should be, should be minimal. Although he did not check yes on, I would like to discuss the proposed subdivision with the board. Um, there was also a mention of trees by, who was that? One of these people.
Dave St. Laurent.
Okay, Dave St. Laurent. He, yes, in his comments, he said proposed tree removal needs to be identified. So I just wanted to bring up those two comments and ask how, uh, any proposed tree removal is identified.
It's a very good question, Anita. Thank you. I'm gonna actually, um, turn this over to Jim just for a quick question answer, if that's appropriate.
So yeah, the quick, short answer is this subdivision doesn't propose any tree removal. So if lot two is going to be developed at that point in time, an application for a building permit will be, uh, submitted to the planning office and it will be reviewed then. You know, with those things taken into consideration at that time, but this, this application doesn't propose any tree removal.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get a motion yet? I don't think we did. Is there any more discussion?
Jeremy was gonna chime in, so.
Yeah, he's, he's sitting on his hands too.
I make a motion that the proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat.
Second.
A motion in a second. Uh, Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Crisso?
Hi.
That's an eye from me. Unanimous. So moved. The next one. Where are we here? Okay, section nine, financial technical capacity. I mean, I'm even gonna, um, I guess we've, we've been, the way we've been handling this, we're gonna just quickly go through them. We granted a waiver on, or is this the one we, this has been submitted? Uh, financial technical capacity, section nine, the developer has adequate financial technical capacity to meet the standards of this section. And a waiver for submission of documentation regarding financial capacity was approved because there's no infrastructure or other development involved. Since it's just a drawing of imaginary lines. Um, so I guess Andy, or I'm sorry, Crisso, we're ready for a, a.
I'll make a motion that section nine is not applicable to this application.
Okay.
Based, based on the waiver submitted and granted.
And seconded. Thank you, Andy. And vote and roll call. Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Crisso?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. The motion carries. Section ten, surface waters, outstanding river segments. Um, as of July, I'm gonna just skip this one ahead a little bit. As of July first, two thousand and seven, there are no outstanding river segments in Camden. So that should be short and sweet.
I make a motion that section ten is non-applicable as there are no outstanding river segments in Camden.
Okay, Anita, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I wonder if, uh, we could get a little further explanation, if for nothing else, the public, but also for me, um, as to, it appears that this question about surface waters and outstanding river segments is separate from the consideration of a shoreline or the nearby ocean. And I think it is within two hundred and fifty feet. The ocean, but here it says within two hundred and fifty feet of wetland, great pond or river. So I'm a little confused about that and I'm wondering if that can be explained for us.
I guess I'll let Jeremy or, or Jim jump in, but I think you said it yourself. There is no wetland, river or pond as defined in the statute in this subdivision. So it would not apply, but I will allow the question just insofar as that question is imposed. Jeremy, did you want to jump in or do you want to let Jim take this one?
Um, I'll let Jim go and then I'll chime in if, if he doesn't got it. I mean, I think I have it. I just, I don't know, title thirty-eight, chapter three, subchapter one, article two B.
You don't have that memorized?
My gut says that's the list of rivers that are outstanding, um, determined by the legislature or the DEP. I will say in our ordinance, if you look in the, the shoreline zoning ordinance, um, it does not say two hundred and fifty feet, um, of the ocean. It actually says two hundred and fifty feet of a coastal wetland. Which is an interesting, I've always struggled with that a little bit, but it is, it is, this is definitely not a pond, right? We're not at a pond or a lake. We are within two hundred and fifty feet of a coastal wetland. And I guess we are within that.
But I don't think that's what the statute is calling for.
Well, it does say whenever situated entirely or partially within the water should have any pond or lake, not us, or within two hundred and fifty feet of any wetland, great pond or river as defined in title thirty-eight. I don't, you know, I don't know. I guess the question really is, I, again, I don't know if the ocean is defined in, in the Atlantic is defined in title thirty-eight.
Well, is that a surface?
Will this subdivision adversely affect the quality of that body of water or unreasonably affect the. or unreasonably affect the shoreline of that body of water? So we certainly don't have outstanding rivers, but we do have surface waters. And I think you could handle this by just, if you can, I mean, you read that standard that the body of water, you're not going to adversely affect the quality of the ocean, water quality, that's a given, right? And you're not unreasonably going to affect the shoreline of the ocean. So my, my recommendation would be just to make an affirmative motion that you're not impacting that. Does that make sense? Jim, or?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim, first, please.
I, I was just gonna say that I, that I think this, I thought this maybe, I guess I didn't look up what the definition of a wetland is in title thirty eight, chapter three, subsection one, article two B. But I do know in shoreline zoning and other places, like Jeremy said, coastal wetlands, which is the ocean, you know, up to the highest annual tideline typically is considered a wetland. But I wasn't concerned about it because even if you did consider that a wetland as defined in that section, I don't think this subdivision would adversely affect, you know, the ocean. You know, it obviously have a lot more of an effect on a, you know, threatened lake, you know, or something like that that's been identified or, you know, outstanding river segments. But, but I mean, this little drawing two lines on a plan is not gonna hurt the Atlantic Ocean, I don't believe. So.
Okay, does somebody have a question before Anita? Who was that?
Andy had a, Andy had a question.
Yeah, I was gonna say what Jim said. So, you know, it doesn't feel relevant to, you know.
Yep. And Anita, you have your hand up?
Well, I'm sorry. That was just in a confusion about the regulation, really. Drawing an imaginary line on the lot and not doing anything further, as Jim points out, certainly indicates that there's not going to be any damage done to the, to the ocean. I'm just confused about that.
Well, I think you've, you've definitely identified that most of us are confused by that. So good, good work there. But I think, I think we'll take the, the easy out here as far as not, not affecting the, not being affected by this application. And if we need to get into that at some point, we, we shall. Does that sound good for you, Chris O?
Yeah. So do I, you, did I actually make the motion, or do I need to amend my motion?
I don't think you made it yet. I think we, we got into discussion before the motion was made.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that the proposed subdivision will not adversely impact any surface water body of water and
Or shoreline, I think.
Or shoreline of that body of water.
Because?
Because it doesn't, because at this time, there is no construction or other activity planned for the subdivision.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a thing.
Second, Andy? Yep. Okay, so Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
And it's an eye for me. So moved. Section eleven, groundwater, proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect quality or quantity of groundwater.
I make a motion that the proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect quality or quantity of groundwater as there is no, as there are no activities planned or development of the property.
Seconded.
Okay, I would, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm with Mark on this one, just because we, we actually know that there probably are some activities planned. But there are no activity, there is no infrastructure proposed in this subdivision application. So I would maybe request, Chris, that you modify that language, say there is no
There, there are no infrastructure proposals in this, in this proposed subdivision plan.
Yeah, that's the language I'm looking for. So Mark, you comfortable with a second on that one?
Yeah, that works better, yes. Yes, I second.
Second, okay. So Andy?
Hi.
Anita? Mark?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
It's an eye for me. So moved. Flood plate areas, based on the emergency, federal emergency man, management agencies flood boundary and floodway maps and flood insurance rate maps and information presented by the developer, showing whether the subdivision is in a flood prone, prone area. If the subdivision is, or any part of it is in such an area, the developer shall determine a hundred year flood elevation. The proposed subdivision plan must include a condition of plan approval requiring basic principal structures and the subdivision be constructed to lowest floor. Again, we have no proposed structures here. I don't recall the issue here within the hundred year flood plane. Go ahead, Jeremy.
I would just let you know that it, it is shown on the plan, the flood.
Yeah.
Right. I just don't have that up in.
Is that the red line along that topo?
Right along the shoreline.
Yep. Use that in your motion that they provided evidence of that in the plan.
Yeah.
It also contains the required note that the buildings have to be constructed with their lowest floor, one foot above the flood elevation.
Well, I was thinking that this was not applicable since the subdivision is not in a flood plain area.
It is. A portion of the property is in the flood zone, so it is applicable, and it does require the note.
Okay, I thought that, I thought the subdivision was not in, anywhere in it, so sorry.
Yeah, lot one runs all the way down to the high water line, and the flood zone comes up above that.
Is there any further discussion on this? Before we get to a motion, Anita?
I have a question about what we are, my mind is kind of going back and forth as to what we are considering the subdivision. In my head, it's like carving out this smaller lot at the, at the road. But when we're talking about the subdivision, are we also talking about what's happening at the, the house, the porch? Sorry, the lot with the existing house?
Yes.
Both of them together are the subdivisions, is that correct?
Both lots are, all that land, the division and the creation of, the creation of the two lots, meaning the two, the division line that runs parallel with Baby Street and then comes back to Baby Street, those two lines, those are what create the subdivision. But the subdivision itself is made up of two lots, so there's the small lot by the road and the bigger lot that runs all the way to the water.
The part that runs to the water is, is that an easement or officially part of the lot? Is that an easement over the, over the ocean side?
That's an easement, Anita.
Well, the, but the whole water probably comes part of lot one.
Right. Right. All the coverage along the water is on lot one. That's why I was saying that, that this particular criteria about flood plain does apply because the flood plain does come up on to lot one.
Right.
But we've met everything by showing where that limit of the special flood hazard area is. We identified what the elevation of it is, and we put a note on the plan stating that any buildings placed within this subdivision have to be constructed such that their lowest floor is at least a foot above base flood elevation, including the basement. So we've done everything required.
The shoreline zoning setbacks would prohibit any structure from being down in that, that area anyway, Anita.
True. Right. Go ahead, Anita.
And this, this is why I'm, I was a little confused. I didn't say anything, but I was a little confused about section eleven when it makes reference to alone or the subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities. So the existing activities are what's happening on the lot where the house exists. And I wasn't sure, it seems like what we're saying is anything that's going on right now where that house is, is not adversely affecting the quality or quantity of groundwater. So I was.
Right. I mean, that's under a separate, that's under a separate permit. And the question is, is dividing this lot off going to adversely, you know, even if you add it to whatever's going on under the committed activities going on there, is it going to add or adversely affect the quality or quantity of the groundwater, groundwater in that, in that particular section you raised? And again, the answer, I think, is a pretty clear no, because we're just, again, drawing lines. But it's, it's reasonable to, to remember, as, and as Jim has pointed out, that when we start talking about some of these issues, including the flood plain, the second lot, the first existing lot, what is it, lot one, is relevant to the subdivision because it is part of it. And so anytime you see an issue that, that encroaches and brings that lot into, into consideration, that is fair game. As long as you remember that we're not talking about, well, if they build a house on this lot, then it goes down to the, you know, add that to that. That all is handled under different stuff. But considering both lots as they exist is absolutely appropriate for the board. Or as they will exist under the proposal. Is that clear?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Chris, I know you've been chewing on a motion now for a minute here.
I will make a motion that the proposed subdivision contains a plan or, sorry.
How about a plan with no disturbance of the shoreline? Does it work?
Isn't the requirement here to have a condition requiring that the principal structures in the subdivision will be constructed with the lowest floor, including the basement, this one foot above the hundred year flood?
I think you've got it, Andy.
And showing the boundaries and the elevation.
Right, that was what I was trying, I was.
Yeah, I think so. The plan needs to, needs to meet those criteria, is essentially what.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the proposed subdivision
Plan?
Plan shows the flood plain boundaries and all and has a note. No, I'm sorry, I'm getting garbled with my words.
You're right. I think you're right on it.
Has a note to exclude any construction above one foot above the hundred year flooded elevation.
I want to just caution you there, so it excludes any construction that does not reach one foot above
Yeah.
the one hundred flood year flood plain elevation. I think is the language we're looking for.
Yeah.
Jim, are you comfortable with what we just said there? It was a little garbled.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna say in the motion. I think it was pretty close when you, Chris, I started to say it does not include any construction above that elevation, but it's really, you can't have it.
Yeah, but I meant below, yeah.
Right, right. So do you want, maybe we'll try one more clean sweep out, or we could have Deanie read it back, and she's cleaned it up for us.
Yeah.
This is what I got, that the proposed subdivision plan shows the flood plain boundaries and has a note to exclude any construction that does not reach one foot above whatever that term is, flood.
The hundred year flood elevation.
The lowest floor, the lowest floor does not, yeah. One foot above the one hundred year flood elevation. Be good with that.
Is that a double negative? Are we gonna be a double negative here? That could be cleaned up a little.
Principal structures in the subdivision will be, will be constructed with their lowest floor
Or above.
basement at least one
Thank you.
of one hundred year flood elevation. Is that it?
Thank you, much better.
Chris O, is that right for your?
That's, that's exactly what I said.
You guys didn't hear that?
That's what I said like ten minutes ago. You didn't hear me?
Got it. Yeah.
Why are we turning around in circles on this?
Where did you get that, Jeremy? Did you?
Right from, right from our
Article eight.
Well, right from the document that went around to everyone today.
Okay.
Yeah, article eight, right there.
Okay.
Beautiful. Did I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Now we can move to a vote. Roll call. Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
And it's an eye for me. So moved. Section thirteen, freshwater wetlands, all freshwater wetlands within the proposed subdivision have been identified on any maps that it is part of the application regardless of the size of these wetlands. There were no wetlands, I will note, indicated on the plans.
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion that section thirteen is not applicable since there are no wetlands in the proposed freshwater wet division.
Freshwater.
Freshwater wetlands, thank you.
Second.
Got a second from Seagant Dollar. That's great. Go ahead, Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
It's an eye for me. Motion carries. Section fifteen, storm water. The proposed subdivision will provide for adequate storm water management. We approved a waiver of the submission of documentation regarding, regarding storm water management because there is no development or infrastructure proposed.
Did we just skip over fourteen?
Oh, well, I just, the document I have actually goes thirteen and fifteen. What is fourteen?
Where is fourteen?
Fourteen is River, or Brook.
But what is it now?
River, stream, or Brooks.
Right.
Don't have it right in front of me. Do you want to read it into the?
I could do it if you need to, Mark.
Any river, stream, or brook within or abutting the proposed subdivision has been identified on any map submitted as part of the application for purpose of this section, river, stream, or brook has the same meaning as in title thirty eight, section four eighty dash B, subsection nine.
And I think we're pretty clear. There's no river, stream, or brook on this one, correct, Jim?
Correct.
So I'll make a motion that section fourteen is not applicable as there are no river streams or brooks within the subdivision proposal.
Second.
Okay, Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
That's an eye for me. So moved. So thank you, Mark, for keeping us on track. I can't count. Section fifteen, storm water. I read it out already, but we, we granted a waiver on this one because there's no development proposed.
Do you need a motion on that, or is that just a? We need a motion. I'll make a motion that section fifteen is not applicable based on the waiver previously granted for this.
Second.
Okay, Chris O?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
See how I keep you guys on your toes there?
Yeah.
Yeah, changing it up.
And if anybody wants to, you know, make motions, I'm sure that Chris.
Yeah, please feel free, jump in.
Wouldn't object. We don't want anybody to feel like we're just running this through. So section sixteen is spaghetti lots prohibited. If any lots in the proposed subdivision have shore frontage on a river, stream, brook, great pond, or coastal wetland, as these features are defined in title thirty eight, section four eighty B, none of the lots created within the subdivision have a lot depth to shore frontage ratio greater than five to one. We are not changing the frontage on this coastal wetland, as we're calling it. And lot two does not have any frontage, just a right of way to the shoreline, which is required. So no ratio issue here as far as I'm concerned, but I'm open for discussion or questions.
Yeah, I'd like Jim to kind of elucidate that a little bit regarding how this is not a spaghetti lot portion. You're saying that's true because it's an easement and not an actual part of the lot?
Well, that would be true. Yeah, it's not part of the lot. That, that right of way would be considered part of the lot. It's, it's actually part of lot one. So in order to have a spaghetti lot, you'd have to have a lot that was, ran back from the water five times as far as it was wide along the water. And the only one that's got frontage is lot one, and it's not even as deep as it is wide along the water, so it's less than one to one.
Does that satisfy your curiosity? Does that satisfy your curiosity there, Anita?
Thank you.
Great, uh, do we have a motion?
Was Mark saying something?
I said you're up, Crissow.
Uh, I will make a motion that there are no spaghetti lots in the proposed subdivision.
Okay, watch this one, Anita?
Hi.
Crissow?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
And it's an eye for me, motion carries. Section 17, lake phosphorus concentration, no lake here. So we're gonna move quickly on this one, I'm guessing?
I make a motion that section 17 is not applicable as there are no lakes in the proposed subdivision.
Second.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Crissow?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
It's an eye for me, so moved. Section 18 impacts on adjoining municipality, for any proposed subdivision that crosses municipal borders. Again, this one does not, uh, so should be quick work.
I make a motion that section 18 does not, is inapplicable based on the proposed subdivision not crossing municipal boundaries.
Second.
Okay, uh, Mark?
Wow, uh, hi.
Crissow?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
And it's an eye for me, so moved. Land subject to liquidation harvesting. I don't know of any timber that's been, uh, harvested, but I'll read it, timber on the parcel being subdivided has not been harvested in violation of rules adopted pursuant to Title 12, Section 886914.
I'll make a motion that the section 19 is not applicable as no timber has been harvested on the parcel.
And there's no plan to harvest.
In this proposal.
And there is no harvesting as part of the subdivision proposal.
Second.
That's great, we got a second. Let's see here, Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Crissow?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
It's an eye for me.
Hey, Crissow, if you want a break from making motions, I'm happy to step in.
We got one more. That already tells, I wrote in the last one.
That was a joke, guys, yeah. Yeah, I got it, I got you, I'm with you, Andy.
Brilliant, I'll do the heavy lifting now from here on out. Section 20 conformity with local ordinances and plans. The proposed subdivision conforms with the duly adopted subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance, floodplain ordinance, comprehensive plan, and other ordinances included in the municipal code as appropriate. In making this determination, the municipal reviewing authority may interpret these ordinances and plans. This is kind of a catch-all, is there any discussion on this one? I don't see any, okay. Andy, you're up.
Oh, I'm making it, okay.
You, you can't volunteer and then not do it.
I'll make a motion that the proposed subdivision and the lots within it meet the requirements of the Town of Camden ordinances.
Second.
Seagutola gets all the seconds on this one. Um, we will go to Anita.
Hi.
Crissow?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
And it's an eye for me, motion carries. Whoo, so that was quite a bit, I think we got through all of it. That takes us back to our process agenda. We finally need to have the grand motion, and, and Andy, I don't know if you're up to the task or not, or if you want to let Crissow, you know, get the gold on this one. One thing I will just remind you when making this motion that we're approving, if we're approving this plan, is that the approval is based on information, is based on and relies on the information provided by the applicant at the, the hearings.
I will make a motion
Jump up at once, here we go.
I will make a motion that the application for the matchbox subdivision at 108 Bayview Street, as shown on the plan prepared by Gartley and Dorsky dated September 22, 2021, has met the approval criteria of Article 8 and has been approved, this approval is based on information provided by the applicant.
Great.
Second.
All right. Anita?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Crissow?
Hi.
Seagutola?
Hi.
And it's an eye for me. So moved, the, uh, application is approved. And, um, thank you, Jim, for, uh, bearing with us as we go through this process and providing clear answers to our questions. Does anybody else have, Jeremy, you want to chime in here?
Yeah, we will, we will need you all to sign, um, the, uh, plan, so we'll have that available in the next day or so. Um, and then, um, Jeannie will send out an email, um, that's in the conference room.
But is it rum cake? I only come into the town office for rum cake.
Couple months, Ethan.
Ah. It's gotta be some sort of, you know.
Will that be next week, probably?
I mean, we'll try to get it as soon as possible, when Jim wants that, but, um, or needs that. Do you need it? Anita?
No, no.
Tomorrow's Friday, so, um, yeah, it'll be there next week. Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Ethan, I have a question.
Sure, Pat.
Um, I'm not a voting member because we didn't need the alternate, but can I make motions or not?
I
No.
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 Yeah, I was going with no, um.
Okay.
You can certainly participate in the discussion. Um, we welcome that, and, and so when I say, is there any discussion, if you have something you want to chime in, we welcome your input. But as far as like actually making the formal motion and voting on the motions, that's preceded members.
Yeah, and if there is an actual hearing component, you, you're not allowed to ask questions, is my recollection as well.
And if there's a what, Crissow?
Uh, like in a public hearing, the alternate has not been seated, they're not allowed to ask questions of a, of someone testifying or witness, is my recall.
Once you go into deliberation
Yeah.
then the alternate can't participate.
Okay, all right, and that's, that's if I'm not needed during that particular session, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not personal.
Yeah, it's nothing personal. In fact, I think you chose this, didn't you? To remain the alternate.
I have a question for Jeannie. So when we sign off on this, is, is there any particular order, because I remember there was a back and forth on a
There is, but, but the most important thing is that I sign first.
Okay.
Ethan signs first, and it needs to be dated, and that gets missed sometimes. And then however many copies Jim wants, we need one.
And the order needs to be the same on the other plans as well.
Yeah.
And I've got three plans.
If I go first, and then Andy goes second, we need that to be the same order on the next plan. But it doesn't matter what order the other board members sign, and Pat, you do not need to sign.
Right. Do we need to put the date next to each of our signatures that we signed it?
No.
This is date of approval.
Okay.
Not date of signing.
I'm sure Jeannie will remind me when I come in to sign it. All right, so who hasn't made a motion today, because this is the most fun motion of all?
Oh, Jeremy's got something.
Jeremy's got his hand up.
All right, is this a motion to end the meeting? Is this a motion to end the meeting?
Yeah.
That's where we're headed, you don't get to make that motion.
Can I just let you know, I'm, I am working on a, a potential, I've got nothing, nothing scheduled, um, in terms of site plan or subdivisions moving forward right now. So likely on the 21st, we may have, um, a discussion on some possible zoning amendments moving forward, it'll be a workshop um, that I may be working on. There's also in the works, um, at least one, um, zoning amendment that may be coming forward from an applicant, and that's to amend our adult use. Oh, what we allow for adult cannabis, adult use in cannabis, so that may be coming forward, um, in the next month or so. So that's something to be on the, ready for.
Okay.
So we are, we got right now.
Can I move? That we adjourned? I have done so.
If you can get a second.
Second.
Looks like Mark's, Mark's on them all, all right, uh, gonna go around, Crissow?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
It's an eye for me, thanks everybody for your efforts on this, thanks again, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
And, uh, always Jeannie and Jeremy for your assistance. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Night.